Good evening, everybody. I'll open up the 6:00 PM regular meeting for the City of Angels, Kent. All rise for roll call.
All rise for roll call?
No. Oh. Allegiance, everybody, do not order. No, let's do roll call. Welcome to 2023, everybody.
You weren't here, but.
We were not drinking.
Renew Mayor Berleos.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hernan.
Present.
Councilmember Tuscornia.
Present.
Councilmember Moncada.
Present.
Councilmember Schrato.
Present.
Staff is present.
Thank you, Rose. Now, I'm allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Item three is report on closed session. Direction was given to staff on items A and B. Item number four is approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Is there any members of staff?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Uh, yeah. So we need to amend the agenda. Um, I'm asking for a city council to approve an urgency art item for the emergency proclamation related to the winter storm. Uh, so the Brown Act allows a city council to take an action on any item that does not appear on the agenda. If two-thirds of the council, if all are present, or all members of council, if fewer than all members are present, determine there is a need to take immediate action on the item, then the need to take immediate action came to the city council attention after the agenda is posted, which it did. So, uh, unfortunately, uh, we weren't able to look into the future in order to get this on the agenda before it was posted. But I am asking council to amend the agenda allowing for the emergency, uh, the local emergency proclamation.
And what would I put that under? Would it be like a?
Usually it would, the proclamations go before anything.
Okay. So we would, that would be number five then?
Uh, right after public comment.
Okay. So we'll go number six.
Yeah.
That would be seven, and that would be eight. Okay.
Um, okay. So we just need a poll.
Okay. So I would poll. I don't have a raise or any, hold on one second. I would poll the council for an emergency proclamation to be put into item number six. Will you do a, will you do a roll call vote for me, Rose?
Uh, Moncada?
Aye.
Schrato?
Aye.
Hernan?
Aye.
Tuscornia?
Yes.
Mayor Berleos?
Aye.
Five years.
Okay, so that puts it in there. Okay. Any members of the public? Would you like to amend the? Nope, nope, nope. Anything online, Rose? Okay, I would look for motion to approve the amended agenda now.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody disapprove, same sign. Item number five, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action can be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes per person. Anybody in the House want a public comment? Anybody online, Rose?
No.
Hearing, unseeing none, I will close public comment. Now, we move on to item number six, local emergency proclamation. Do we have to read that?
Um.
What do we have to do?
Yes. So let me get this. Um, okay, so.
I'm trying to post it up there as well, so.
You guys, you guys tell me when.
Are you going to start with the staff report?
Um, no. I'm going to go ahead and do my proclamation, which is the signed one.
Um, actually, the one I attached in there is still on the silent, but.
Okay. Same thing. So, uh, uh, so basically, government code allow, so this is, uh, the proclamation that I made, um, of a local emergency due to the December 22 winter storms, um, that impacted the City of Angels. Government code 8630, um, and the City of Angels Emergency Operations Plan empowers me, the city administrator, to proclaim the existence or threaten the existence of a local emergency if you're not in session, um, which you were not in session on December 29th, um, when we started identifying that there was an imminent threat of a storm that was going to be coming. Um, the EOC was opened on, uh, all these are running into each other right now, so on, uh, Saturday, uh, December 31st, um, I went down there and represented the city and also, uh, assisted with getting the EOC, um, up and running so that the county could start, um, offering services as needed. Uh, it was determined at that point that the county was also going to, um, do a proclamation, so Jacque Osborne did do his proclamation, um, and they will be having a special meeting with the board supervisors to ratify that as well. So, um, we identified that commencing honor about 2:00 PM of the 29th day of December, um, that's when we were dealing with the imminent threat. We can, um, uh, continue to deem its existence for the next seven days, um, once I proclaimed it, and then it needs to be ratified by city council, hence why we did the urgency work or an urgency item on the agenda. Um, and then, um, this, what it does is, uh, should the governor of California, um, do a proclamation of disaster at the state level, it opens up funding for us to relieve of, relieve, uh, the city and the county of costs associated with, um, the winter storm. This would include overtime, equipment use, material services, and also address any damages that occurred. It also identifies, um, funding for businesses through the Small Business Administration in terms of grants or loans that businesses could utilize from that. So it really identifies a significant amount of resources for the agencies involved within the county and the city, and so that is why we're doing this. We are still in the emergency.
Is tomorrow covered?
It's, it's, huh?
Is tomorrow covered?
Uh, tomorrow is covered, so this will stay, uh, open as a, um, emergency. When we look at the resolution that I'm asking you to approve, which is Resolution 2307, um, it, uh, would be required to have city council review, uh, the continuance at least once every 60 days. So we will keep it open, um, for the period, uh, and the reason it's 60 days is it will take us a while to, um, initially, uh, identify all of the damage. Um, just so everybody knows, the next storm that's coming in, uh, that is slated to start tomorrow. High winds will start coming in somewhere between 10:00 and noon tomorrow, and then will last through into the evening. In addition, there will be precipitation. We don't know to the extent if the precipitation will be as much as it was the last, um, go around. However, our ground is completely saturated, so we could get half as much and see just as that, um, of, um, of, yeah. Um, in addition, because the, the ground is saturated and wind, we're really concerned about trees. So we are currently going out with some, um, some crews to take down some trees that we have identified as being hazards, um, and we'll continue to monitor that. We have sand, um, that was, uh, delivered by Caltrans, uh, two, two piles of sand. One was delivered the other night. We just had another truckload brought in this morning. We have sandbags available, um, when we're also, uh, working together jointly with the county to make sure that we have, um, support services across agencies. They are going to be opening up a call center, and that is so that they can, uh, identify a way for people to get ahold of, um, the county should they need, uh, animal services, um, assistance, any evacuation assistance, as well as any temporary sheltering assistance. And we have offered, uh, staff should they need to, um, man some of the funds down there for the next couple of days through Friday. It's just kind of a play of by ear to determine if that needs to happen. So the resolution, um, is listed here. It, again, it, um, it, it identifies that should the state of California, uh, issue a declaration of, um, disaster, it would open up funding opportunities, um, not only to address our current damages and costs associated with winter storm, but also it would open up hazard mitigation, um, grant funding as well. And what I'd say is through this disaster, we definitely have identified some hazards that we need to figure out how to mitigate. So, uh, yeah, that would be good to, um, to address those. So, um, I'm looking for council to approve Resolution 2307, uh, resolution of the City of Angels, uh, city council ratifying the city administrator proclamation of existence of a local emergency.
Any questions by staff or council? Any public comment out there on it?
Uh, one question if I could ask.
Step on up to the mic if you don't mind.
Not at all.
Thank you.
You mentioned that you had sandbags or sand available.
Yes.
Where is that?
So that is, that's behind where the police department is. So we have sandbags and sand available.
Okay, great.
Limit is 10, 10 bags.
Any other public comment in the House? Rose online, anybody?
Um, and then, uh, the, uh, the county and the city have been working together to issue, um, joint press releases, um, just to ensure that the city is included on those press releases if we have, uh, roads that are, um, are shut down or, uh, any other issues that we might have within the city. That we, it's one, um, communication that's going out, uh, to everybody, and then we are jointly sharing that information across our websites and, uh, social media. So make sure you follow our website, and, um, if you are in Facebook, make sure you go to the, uh, City of Angels Facebook page and follow us for the latest information on anything you want to know.
I have one comment real quick, just Public Works, Fire, PD, ladies in the office, uh, Caltrans was amazing even up Highway 449. I had to go to Copper a few times. They were in culverts doing stuff. Um, who else? I save water, I don't know, Chris, it's good.
Uh, yeah.
Everybody, I'm forgetting somebody, but there was a heck of a lot of water flowing, and there was stuff going on, so.
So Chris, uh, uh, our Public Works superintendent was, uh, pulled a 24-hour shift, um, making sure that we get the, the water through the system. Um, we, he looked, and I think we had about 4 million gallons.
Yeah.
Of water running through the system. So it was a massive amount. Um, there was also a lot of coordination with Utica Water Power Authority.
Exactly.
Um, we needed to make sure that, uh, the, the flows that are coming from up country that are going to come down, those are going to impact the flow in the Angeles Creek, so making sure that we were coordinating with fire and police and Public Works, um, making sandbags and sand available, making sure that everything was cleaned out ahead of time, knowing that we were going to have drainage issues. So all of Public Works staff, all of the police department, all of the fire department did just a really spectacular job. County, uh, resources were instrumental as well as, um, Caltrans has been a really great partner for all of this. So, um, it was, it was, I haven't been in the EOC since probably 2015, when I was there during P-Fire, but I think, you know, the benefit of going down and being part of that is to foster good relationships in our agency. And when you do that, it makes it a lot easier to identify, um, efforts outside of an emergency that we can partner with. So it's a, it, it was a, um, it, it was good to reacquaint myself with a lot of new places down there. So, um, we, I think we have a really good, um, rhythm now, and, uh, we are preparing for the next onslaught of, uh, winter storms and, uh, in, and like all the water, just didn't like that it all came at one time.
Yeah.
All right. So, yeah, that's all I had to say. But I will make the motion to pass Resolution 2307.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody disapprove, same sign. And six. Item number seven, consent agenda. Is there any member of staff or public that would like to remove or pull consent agenda? Hearing, unseeing none, I would look for a motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody disapprove, same sign. Item 8A is appointment of the city council and/or staff to commissions and mayoral and vice mayor appointment. Rebecca?
Um, okay. So, uh, really, the recommendation is to review the commission and appoint city representatives on each in addition to the appointment of mayor and vice mayor. Uh, so city council should be reviewing and appointing council or staff to represent the City of Angels on various commissions, um, young or, uh, boards, uh, you know, groups that are representing our interests. So we are representing a variety of commissions and/or boards, um, or various agencies, and so the list, um, on your packet is kind of the, the bullet point list of each that we have a meeting for, as well as the current representative, the day of the week, um, kind of meeting start date sometimes, how often they meet, as well as the current alternative contact. And then I put information down below to give a little bit more information on what each really is. So, uh, the, um, our policy, our council handbook says that, uh, it's every two years, um, that the, uh, the representation should be, um, and then I think in most cases we've met the two years. Mayor is every two years. So they're both two years. Um, so, uh, and the other thing is, it's just a good idea to just review these just to make sure everyone is understanding of what, um, they represent, what the city's of representation is on it, you know, what, what they mean. It's a time to ask questions if you're not entirely sure what we're doing on it or what they do for us or why we're there. Um, and then also to make sure that, um, I guess the workload is even among council members, just to make sure nobody's, um, taking, you know, too much. So we're just trying to spread the wealth here. So the Central Sierra Economic Development District, um, that is a five-county economic development district. That's the one, um, that has Alpine, Amador, Calvaros, Mariposa, Toole, Wally, as well as the cities of Sonora, Angels, Kent. It is a, uh, group that, um, is coming together to identify, uh, of, um, projects and programs to align those with, uh, funding, uh, that's out there. It's a way, instead of each individual agency going out and looking for, um, economic development, um, funding, that it's kind of more like a pool. So think of it as a regional, um, a regional project, uh, funding mechanism. So really, the target industries that they're looking at is manufacturing, construction, healthcare, natural resources, and hospitality. And then it's also important to note that the, um, the said partners with the mother of job training and, uh, local economic development offices, and they offer assistance to businesses and residents throughout the motherland region. So, um, I think when, you know, it, it's just good to, to recognize that, that there are support, um, for various businesses, uh, and agencies within this, uh, group, um, in terms of, uh, workspaces, business support, um, that's above and beyond what the chamber is also providing. Um, the Calvaros County Council of Governments, that's really our regional transportation planning agency. Um, we, I, I work with COG extensively. That's how we get a lot of our funding for a lot of our, um, road infrastructure projects. Not so much, nothing with water and wastewater for the most part, but a lot of, uh, bike and pedestrian road, um, type projects. I have a very close relationship with, um, the COG executive director, uh, and their board, um, and so we work, uh, at length with COG. Calvaros Public Power Agency, that's how we get our lower, uh, energy costs by being members of the CPPA. So it's a kind of complicated system that Dennis Dickman, uh, works on. He's the director of the CPPA in identifying, uh, new loans entitlements to lower power costs to participating agencies. We are one of many, uh, participating agencies in Calvaros County, uh, Calvaros County itself is, as well as a lot of other governmental, um, special districts and schools. The Integrated Regional Water Management Authority, IRWMA, we really are just a member of the Watershed Advisory Committee. So it's the T-Stam Watershed Committee that was established. We, uh, provide, uh, recommendations to the board of directors, but we have no authority to take any action that binds the authority in any way. But we do want to have some representation on there. The question I would have on here is, um, whoever sits on this, um, I don't know if it makes, because there is no action that binds the authority, it may make more sense to have staff included, um, on here as opposed to a council member, mainly because you have to have, um, an internal understanding of what, um, what pieces of water infrastructure or water shed impact us and which ones don't, which you would have to have operational expertise. And what ones we qualify for. Which ones we qualify. And what ones we don't.
I nominate Chris.
I nominate Chris.
I'll nominate Chris for you.
So that would be the one that I, I don't know if it makes a ton of sense to have, um, a council member on it as opposed to our staff. That would be the one change. The Local Area Formation Commission, so, um, LAPCO, uh, for the most part, we deal with LAPCO anytime we are talking about annexations or, um, annexation or annexations. Uh, but, um, so it, there's two from Angels, two from the Calvaros, uh, where supervisors and two from special districts, and then one public member at large. And, um, LAPCO is trying to preserve agriculture and open space lands, orderly growth and development, orderly, um, development and discourage urban sprawl, balance competing interests, and promote efficient service delivery. So they, um, kind of are just making sure that, um, land use development in term of among regions is happening in a nice and respectful and happy way. Museum Foundation, the, um, so we used to have a museum commission, and we have the museum foundation. The museum, uh, commission was disbanded, um, so now it's the museum foundation. And, um, they raise necessary funds to support the development and expansion of exhibits, collections, and programs of the Angels, Kent Museum. And with the museum director, um, they try to create awareness of and grace the Angels, Kent Museum's, uh, history and education throughout Northern California. What I would say is, for the foundation, we really don't have, um, a, uh, agreement with the foundation, so I would say moving forward, that might be something that we would want to do, because we really, there's not anything that really defines what the relationship between the foundation and the city is supposed to be. They do raise funds for the museum. They do use the museum's facilities in order to raise funds. They, um, uh, want to be on our website. They're very integrated in the museum, but ultimately, it's the city's museum. So I think we do need to probably sit down and have some sort of a. MOU. Something. Yeah. To determine how exactly that. Who's responsible for what and. So I think it's important that we do have representation on there. They are a funding partner, um, but I just, it's, it's just kind of been out here and we've been over here, so, um, I think we just need to formalize it a little bit better. But I think it makes sense for us to continue to be on there, but I think we just need to form a little bit. Do you think a council member or a staff member? I think a council member. Um, then we've got the Solid Waste Task Force. So, uh, really, it's a more of an advisory, um, and it's just making sure, kind of what's, what's, what's happening at the solid waste level at the county, which directly impacts the city, that we're aware of what's going on and how it's going to impact our city residents. Uh, we've got the, uh, Utica Water and Power Authority Budget Committee, which is different than the Utica Water and Power, um, Authority Board. The Budget Committee is more just dealing with the financial recommendations, um, that would then ultimately go to the full board, um, and that would include annual budget, major changes, financial policy recommendations, anything finance related. And then the board itself, um, is a nonprofit joint powers authority, um, and that is a partnership between the City of Angels and the Union Public Utilities District. So, uh, we get our surface water, like UPGM, the City of Angels, through UWPA. So it's important, obviously, for every reason that I just said, why, uh, it's important that we have good representation on there and, um, and just a solid understanding of the importance of that relationship. Um, and then current mayor is Alvin, and, um, I forgot to put the second part, but then our current, uh, vice mayor is Jen Davis-Hernan. So that's everything in there. I included the handbook in case anyone is interested in the ins and outs of all of that, but ultimately, it's a matter of identifying a current rep for the, um, the advisory commissioner boards as well as, um, an alternative, and that helps us with scheduling if something's out.
Okay. Any comments from staff or council? If not, I'll open it for public in just one second. And then can I break this into three different things?
Mm-hmm.
Any public comment? Rose, anybody online? Okay. So can I break this into our appointees on, on boards, and then a mayor, and then a vice mayor vote? Okay. So let's do appointees first. I guess for me, I'm good on everything I want here, other than you picked up CPPA for me, correct?
Yeah.
So we can change that to Gretel.
I'm like that. I'm fine with what I'm currently on.
And then we'll send Chris to IRWMA.
So we're going to switch that one to staff? Is that what you're saying? Okay. So Chris and the alternative would be me.
Me.
You're on here a lot.
I'm on here a lot.
I know. So do you want to dump something off? What do you, or, I mean?
I would take on your solid waste task. I'm not letting that one go.
I'm going to say you seem to like that one.
I'm on vice chair. Um, I just got on that one. So.
So I would love if someone could take the central Sierra Economic Development. It is in the day, and it's, but they only meet quarterly, which is good.
I, I tried that one, and I dumped it off on you.
I think I had it for a minute too.
So one, one thing though, before we jump in there, because this impacts all of that. So our council policy, and again, this is a policy that you all approved, so you can certainly change it, is that the terms on advisories, commissions, and boards is limited to two years. So if you want to stay on any of the current, you know, the current
Committees.
Committees or whatever, we just are going to want to amend the policy language on that.
So it's going to only do a two-year term that has to be off? Or was it we had to review it every two years?
It says it's limited to two years.
Is that to encourage movement within the council and ideas and new, probably? New energy?
However, again, it's your policy.
And there's something, something to be said for the traction and the knowledge that you gain during the continuity, the two years that you're on there. It's quite the learning curve for some of these, so I think, I think I'm with you. I thought maybe it was to readdress it every two years.
And then make quick changes.
And then adjust, yeah.
Are you looking for the page?
I'm looking for the footnote, especially if it doesn't work with your schedule.
Yeah. Give it a break.
There's one chair to Mr. Saldino. Do you see that footnote mixed up?
Are you this, are you that? Oh, okay. Well, waiver of guidelines, any
It does need to be revised, that handbook. There are items that need to get pulled out.
You're not even on there. I've doubled important.
Can I not be the alternate for UWPA? Do you want to do that one? It's a night one.
UWPA.
The very last one.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's an evening meeting, so.
Yeah, it's on the 14th or something.
Yeah. The evenings are better. Oh, okay. So that's, I think, that's why I was saying
C, two, oh, two, God, zero.
That's our only
That's her baby. They seem after evening.
Deal with all the garbage.
Let's talk trash. So Gretel's going to take over in my alternate spot. I didn't even see that.
Which one?
UWPA.
It references a section that's not even in our heat code anymore. So let's, let's just say majority, let's, let's do this. If the majority of council wants to keep the assignment, then we'll keep the assignment.
Can we make it to where it's revisited every two years?
Yeah.
And we can adjust that?
And bring it back?
And we can bring this whole, we can bring that back?
We need to bring the handbook.
We can, we can bring the handbook back with revised, and for right now, we'll just stay with our groups as it kind of is, because there's not a whole lot of adjustments other than we're going to send staff.
So I got Gretel on CPPA.
Which she already was.
Uh huh. And Caroline's the alternate for that one. Then the IRWMA is Chris and Rebecca. And then for UWPA, I have Alvin and Jennifer, and Gretel is the alternate.
Yes.
No other changes? We do need an alternate for the budget committee meeting, right?
No.
I think it would be me.
I think it would.
It would be?
I don't, we just would make it where we, we all agreed on a date.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's infrequent and it's
Yeah, it's
Yeah.
It's three times a year. It's a schedule.
Can't, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so
So we just need, who's making the motion to keep it that way, the way I just said?
So I will make a motion.
And I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody disapprove, same sign. Okay, so that passes then.
Oh, we didn't do public comment on that. Sorry.
Oh, I did public comment it for all three at the beginning.
Okay.
Yep.
Then we're good. Now the mayor.
Okay. Now mayor you will. So if anybody would like to make a motion for who they'd like to be mayor, open it this time.
I'd like to make the motion that our vice mayor become mayor, so Jen Harden would be our next mayor.
I will accept in second motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody disapprove, same sign?
Nope.
Is that a five?
Yeah.
Okay. Five oh.
Congrats, Jen. Congratulations.
There you go. It's all yours now.
Thank you. Okay, so it looks like
You ready to switch? You want to switch seats here? You're good.
No, I'm fine. I don't, yeah. Vice mayor. So having said that, we need to address who we would like for our vice mayor for the next two-year term. Anybody want to make a motion for vice?
I'll make the motion for myself. I can do that.
You can do that. Absolutely.
So then I would move that I be vice mayor.
Okay. Looking for a second? I'll second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 There we have it.
Is it five yes?
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Okay, moving on, we are at fifth item. Now this is eight. This is eight B.
No, yeah.
And this is resolution, a discussion and approval of resolution 2304, banners over State Route 49 in the City of Angels Historic District for 2023. Amy Augustine.
That's there. I have council members. You have to get used to that. Every year, we have to go through this. We have to have resolution passed by the city council in order to apply to Caltrans to take up and put down those banners. This year, we have at least 14 that will be doing through the year, which basically translates into 28 forms that we file with Caltrans, 28 work orders that we issue for our public works folks, 14 times that we have to coordinate with bucket trucks, and do our road closures and road reopenings, and that does not include coordinating with each individual group that has the banner to make sure the banner is where it needs to be, be put up and taken down. But before we can do any of that, we do need to pass resolution 2304 so that we can go to Caltrans and get this all started. We are hoping to put up a banner, poles at the park where we can not have to open and close the highway to do this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, anybody, any council member have questions or anything to ask of Amy?
So I have a question. Since when we go to hang the banners at the poles at Utica Park? When that comes up, is that where we'll have a discussion as to what our fees would be for that?
Yes, and they would be significantly lower because the main cost right now is the road closure, flagging, and bucket truck.
So these were all the current, the current banners in the last
There's actually a handout here that has the current, current ones. The 14, we use the previous years we have put up here. And the decorations for Christmas and
Some of these, I don't remember these events.
They were so old.
Clothing for the project, all that stuff.
So Rebecca, can you answer a question for me? Where are we at with our contract with Jim Harry for, for the hanging of these banners? Are we consistent with this timeline?
We just, we just have a contract.
It doesn't have to be renewed or readdressed or anything like that?
I don't know what they're trying to do.
We've got three-year options on it.
Okay.
So we need Rebecca to exercise the
Yeah, we would just have to do an extension and then before it comes. And then, yeah, so, and the discussion had been, we had a bucket truck, it's not working. Do we invest the, how much, well, yeah. Well, number one, we couldn't find anybody to actually fix it. But number two, then it meant, do we go and look at buying a new bucket truck? And, and the reality is, we're trying to desperately move to not having banners over the highway at all and to have them be at Utica Park. The issue at Utica Park is, we've got the Caltrans shop project, which is going to do the sidewalks all the way down to Utica, so we can't really do the banner or the poles there until that gets done, so it's, it's kind of chicken and egg at this point. But we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, but until that happens, this has just been kind of our workaround to work with here for Gold Electric in order to hang the banners, wouldn't it?
Gotcha. And once we establish this list with Caltrans, we're set. We, it's not very flexible. We can't add or remove. I mean, we could remove, obviously, but not add?
It is not supposed to be flexible. We have been notified.
Any other questions? Okay, so at this time, we'll open it up to public comment. Do any members of the public have any comments on this item?
Hi, happy new year, guys. I was just wondering, in regards to the Caltrans contract, what is the cost for having these banners put up across Main Street? Because I know that your goal is to not have them.
It's $525.38 right now. And the bulk of that is to Gold Electric.
So, and does the fee pay?
We, we pay it.
Okay. And what is the fee that the people or organizations?
$525.38.
Typically, in the past, a lot have come to us and asked us to waive that fee.
Right. Okay.
We've had to.
And the only reason I ask is because I know that a lot of people, obviously, travel through town, and I'm wondering if, if it's profitable
Right.
For, you know, in regards to tourism, you know, and how that reflects.
A lot of the banners that we hang up do request a waiver because they are fundraising. And then we do have some banners that are for events that are not, you know, they're, they're commercial events and they do pay.
Right.
I wouldn't say we make, I wouldn't say we even break even on any of it.
And then, um, the goal of having them at Utica Park, where exactly were you thinking again?
So along the highway, right there on the, so, you know, where the
Like where the girdrail is?
Where the girdrail is, yes, but they would be there, present right there when people drive by.
Okay. Okay. I was just wondering, again, visibility, you know?
Yeah.
I like the banners downtown. I think it's, it's kind of a bummer that we want to, in my opinion. Yeah, but you think that they add a little kind of hometown, just an intro, just a little change of, like, hey, this is a little local town, look at what we're doing, kind of thing.
It doesn't mean we can't still do it.
It doesn't mean we can't. It's just, it is very problematic to try to get encroachments across the highway. And so what will happen
We're going to run a polling.
Yep. So what will happen is, we will say we need to put a, we get a request for a banner. We contact Caltrans and we say, okay, we want to, well, first of all, we contact Gold Electric and we say, what date can you install the banner? They will tell us, you know, X date. We contact Caltrans and say, okay, can we please get the banner put up on X date? And then we wait. And then we don't get a response back. So then we go back to Gold Electric and say, okay, well, that didn't work, so is there another date that you can do? So we do this back and forth thing. Once Caltrans finally approves it, then we, we have a window of time that we have to get it up. We have to have staff down there to flag traffic. And then we have to do it all over again when the banner comes down. We've got restrictions on how long the banner can be up. We have restrictions on how long the road can be closed. We have restrictions on, you know, every aspect of crossing the highway. So that, that is the biggest problem, and it's the cost of that bucket truck.
Right. And I did want to add that Caltrans has asked us to re-engineer all of our wiring and such across the highway, so that would be an investment that we would need to consider going down the road. And the banner holders that are being proposed at the park were actually designed as part of the Main Street plan that was approved and had community input. And they wouldn't just be parallel, they would also be at angles so that people could see them going and coming, providing an option to groups who can't afford $500.
Right. That's a great option.
It is.
But we're not saying that we would stop doing the closed mines and the holiday decor.
You still have clothes, you still have your holiday decorations.
We, we will have to cross the bridge in terms of re-engineering the, what Caltrans wants, so.
Is that this year? That's this round?
Not this fiscal year, but it's something that we're going to have to contemplate in the near future.
Then we can annex, and we can State Route 49, and we can do whatever we want. We're going real controversial then.
You're on the fight. Any other members of the public? Anybody online, Rose?
No.
Okay, so we're going to bring it back to council. If there's no further questions or comments, we'll be looking for a motion for resolution 2304.
So moved.
Alvin.
I'll second it.
Second by Gretel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign? Okay. Thank you. Takes us to item 8C. Discussion and approval of resolution number 2302, amend contract for the funding of the Calveras Visitors Bureau, Rebecca Young.
Okay, so in going through the Calveras Visitors Bureau funding contract, it is very confusing, and so Michelle and I keep reading it and then try to figure out, well, did they mean this or did they mean that? And it's the same, Martin has said the same thing. So just to give you a little bit of history, so the, the CVB, Calveras Visitors Bureau contribution changed, has changed as the TOT, or transient occupancy taxes changed. So in 2003, that's when the agreement was initially made to allocate one-third of the additional 4% increase that was cast back then. In 2017, CVB requested a reconsideration, and the city agreed that we would retain $25,000 to benefit tourism, and that the city would also withhold seven, an additional $7,000 for the maintenance of the visitors that are building. And at the time, that's where the CVB was located, which is now the particular gorgeous. And that $7,000 was for use of the bathroom facilities to keep them public down there and maintenance. So in 2019, it was agreed that the city would retain an additional $10,000 to benefit tourism in the city, and that the CVB would also provide $15,000 toward the museum marketing. So this is, it's kind of right before they So, this is, it's kind of right before they take over the museum. So, since that time, the CBB has taken management of the museum. And so, as part of that agreement, the city contributes $50,000 in addition to not reducing their allocation by the previous $15,000 of TOT. And then, so the CBB has been working with us to identify ways that we can become the go-to destination for tourism businesses. That's really the main purpose of the Calvaris Visitor Bureau. But in addition, they've done a really phenomenal job kind of getting the museum to be pretty well self-sufficient. So, the membership and entrance that's getting collected is higher than it's probably ever been in the history of the museum being open. And I think what the CBB has done is done a really great job at marketing the museum and moving the CBB from the downtown location to the museum has really helped in that, in that vein. So, we work very collaboratively with the CBB Executive Director and their staff on identifying all ways that we can partner. So, that includes, you know, outreach methods and also data. And we are coordinating on common outreach efforts to allow for everything from new business attraction, tourists, and also identify how existing businesses can better target their marketing. So, I think that updating the agreement helps ensure that consistent funding, avoid confusion on how we're supposed to be allocating the TOT. And it also gives council the opportunity to weigh in on the relationship that we have with the CBB. So, the city would retain $25,000 of the tourism allocation of the TOT. And we can utilize that to be used for various tourism, city-sponsored events, community benefit programs, and all of those things really support our community. In addition, we would continue to retain $7,000 for the annual house of building maintenance and bathroom facilities at the museum. And then, everything else would just be cleaned up in that agreement. So, the draft agreement is right below that in which we just kind of clean out some of these different, you know, deduct that, deduct this, and deduct that, and make it that we would, they would get that 4%. We would retain $25,000. They would continue to use the TOT to benefit the city. And they're going to start doing a lot more reporting to city council on a quarterly basis. We would retain the $7,000. So, that was the original one. So, then the agreement, I redlined it. We're basically taking out section B and E. And that was where we were going to then deduct another $10,000 and then deduct another $15,000 for museum. So, we're just kind of pulling out the ambiguous language in D and E since the CBB took over the museum, confirming the amount of TOT that we will be retaining, which is $25,000 that we will use for tourism or other benefit programs for the city. And then, I've got the non-redlined version right below that one.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca. Anybody have any questions?
Another question. The $50,000 that the city contributes, this is in addition?
The $50,000.
This $50,000 is for CBB.
That's to run the museum.
That's just strictly.
That's just the museum.
Okay, so the CBB has nothing to do with that $50,000?
Well, the CBB is managing the museum.
So, they're using that funding to manage the museum?
They get that funding specifically to manage the operations of the museum.
So, this is in addition to?
Yes.
So, okay, so they don't lose that $50,000? That's what I was saying.
That's a separate agreement.
That's a separate agreement for CBB, just to management of the museum?
So, it's $50,000.
In addition not to, and their allocation of the previous 15? As such, the city contributes $50,000 in addition to not reducing their allocation by the previous 15?
We were reducing. So, what was happening is, we were giving them, we were giving them one-third of the TOT.
TOT, right.
Then we were subtracting 15. We were subtracting 25. We're subtracting another 10, subtracting another 7. And then, we were turning around once they took over the museum, giving them back the 15 and giving them the 50.
Gotcha.
So, now it's just flat Ds?
Now, it's just flat. We give you 50s. We get, we'll give you one-third of the TOT. We're going to keep 25 of that allocation because it's still in that kind of flavor of tourism because we've got various events that, you know, we're trying to support that the CBB is not managing. And in addition to that, we still have costs associated with that building. So, that $7,000, and they're still keeping that bathroom open as a public bathroom. So, we're retaining that. And then, the museum, they get the rest of it.
Yeah, it's being used as a public bathroom.
How much is it for the public bathroom?
Seven.
And for the buildings and grounds? For roofs and all that? Okay. So, you get the 50K for running the museum, seven for the, we have seven for buildings and grounds and bathroom. And they get 4% of the TOT tax. And, what else? Something else?
Twenty-five?
We keep 25 of their TOT allocation.
So, we're doing away with that?
Right.
Doing away with that. So, now they're.
And that 25, what can be done with that?
That's ours. So, city council has to decide what to do with it.
And spend it towards marketing tourism.
Okay.
Community events. Yeah.
So, we can use that towards Christmas parades and.
Yeah.
Miscellaneous.
Right.
And this was already happening with the 25?
That was already happening, but it wasn't really identified very well. So, that's why these conversations were happening of, Aqua said, well, that was our 25. And then, John was like, oh, well, wait, that was ours. That's our TOT. It's really the city's TOT that you get to decide whatever you want to do with it. And truly, all TOT, you get to decide what you want to do with it.
Right, I'll be divided by.
So, you wanted to take 100% of the TOT and.
Buy new computers or whatever.
Right, whatever. You have the authority to do that. All this is doing is just cleaning up this agreement with the CBB. We don't need the five years of history of subtracting and adding and all this stuff. Just take out those two bottom bullet points and let it run.
And Martin's fine with all this too? He sat down with you, gone over it?
I talked to Martin. And Martin said that he really needs the $7,000 to make sure that that's happening. And he was completely okay with the 25,000. Yeah.
Any questions? Members of the public? Anybody have questions or comments about this item? Rose, anybody online?
No.
Okay, back to council. Any further questions or comments? Or looking for a motion?
I'll approve Resolution 23-2.
One second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Perfect. Moving on. Item 8D, Discussion and Direction on the Utica Park Projects and Approval of Resolution Number 2306, The Contract Between the City of Angels and San Joaquin Office of Education, DBA Greater Valley Conservative Corps, and the Amount of $171,622 for Demo and Renovation on Utica Property. Rebecca.
Okay, so, with the Utica expansion, AMZ, what is it? Three and a half acres roughly? Three point three, three point four?
Three point four, yeah.
If anyone's walked around there and looked at it, there's just a bunch of slash and dead trees and fallen over. And then, when the fire went through, there's old burnt stumps and trees and whatnot all down there. In addition, we have trees in the existing park that are barely hanging in there. You can see through them. They're about to fall over, unhealthy. We've got trees that have been cut down. So, there's just these huge stumps that are in the ground that our kids all play poker at Fireman's Fun Day. But they're still there. And so, so what the recreation and tourism grant for the Utica expansion, one of the items within there is using the Conservation Corps as part of the project. And so, what we can utilize the Conservation Corps for is a lot of the demo and the renovation in terms of cleaning up the grounds and removing the slash, dead trees, cutting down trees, getting rid of the stumps. We can have them do a lot of that pre-construction work that's there. They put, gave us a quote for $171,622. That seems like an enormous amount of money. But, we're also talking about a very large piece of property between the existing Utica Park and almost three and a half acres of a new property that is not flat. It requires a lot of specialized equipment, a lot of hands on the ground because equipment can't go down those canyon sites, which means people are going to physically have to be in there to do that work. They would take it, they would get rid of it, haul everything off, do everything that they need to do.
They will also take the Atlantis, which is notorious for coming back, coming back, coming back. And they are going to spray it to make sure it doesn't come back. When they remove the playground equipment, they will remove the cement that goes with it. So, they would have to dig down to do that. So, it's a fairly expensive proposal.
It's not talking about removing of the cement pad where, like, Fireman's Fun Day was?
Not the pavilion, no.
No, I'm not talking about the pavilion. I'm talking about the other pad where they did the band for Fireman's Market.
The dance spot?
Where the frog jump is.
In the middle?
In the middle of the park.
No, we're talking about where the playground is.
I think there's RP.
This, no, the RP is for, no. So, this didn't have to go out too big because one of the components of the grant, like I said, is specifically use the Conservation Corps. Conservation Corps is always going to cost less than if we went out to bed. You're going to be hard pressed to find a private agency that's going to do what they're going to do for that cost, even though, I get it, it sounds like a lot. So, the, and also, it's hard to find Conservation Corps in our area to do it. So, it includes the demolition disposal, concrete footings, and the grading for the new playground. We also had an arborist come in to identify all the hazard trees. Those were all marked, so those would be removed and stump rained it. In addition, that's removing the slash brush and trees in the expanded area. And, I think that's it.
Okay, to clarify, this does include the expansion?
Yes.
The cleaning of those trees, the grading, all the cleanup of the, I call it Ghost Canyon?
Well, not necessarily the grading because we don't know what that design element's going to look like. But in terms of cleaning it up and getting the slash, the dead trees, the burnt trees, that would all come out.
So, that's future work?
It'll also take care of the fencing around the pit that's way up near the equipment. And they will re-fence that for safety. That's included in their proposal also, so.
So, I got a question while you're there. The project site, Ghost Canyon, where the mine is at and everything? We don't own that. Who, or, who owns that? What's that?
Stay tuned for your January 17.
So, we're okay to go ahead and start, go ahead and clear that then?
We would have to get permission from them if we do not have title to it.
Right. So, that's, Rose, my question is, do we have permission to go?
We require a public hearing on the 17th before we can go forward.
Yeah.
So. So, the grant money, we have to, we have to clear out Ghost Canyon then too? Even though we don't?
Okay, so part of the.
I'm just confused on why we're clearing that? When, when the community club doesn't own it or the city?
We will, because that's part of our $3 million grant. It included a purchase price for that. We have agreed to a price. We simply have to go into escrow and transfer it. But yes, they've accepted.
That, okay, so we're.
They've accepted it. We just need a.
Just so, because somebody, okay, so I can say we're in the, gotcha.
It's an escrow.
That's what I wanted to know.
It will be an escrow. Will be.
And this isn't, this isn't.
I'm not, so basically, it's, my call is not to go into escrow and put money out on the table until we have a signed contract with the state. So, the contract for the agreement is stuck in state land right now.
Gotcha.
If we went forward right now, we run, it's our risk.
Right.
Right, if something happens. So, I'm not, I'm not comfortable making ourselves out there until we have a signed contract with the state. So, it's all, like, this, this work doesn't happen until that happens. But that's not going to happen until we have the contract with the state. But it will all line up when it needs to line up.
And so, you know.
I'm just trying to, yeah, I'm trying to line it up in my head as well.
There is additional money in our per capita grant for the playground?
Yes.
So, all the clearing and stuff at that part, we will do that first with the court. If they're willing to come back out more than once.
Yes.
Yeah. And so, in fact, Rebecca will get into the phasing unless you want me to go through that.
No, we can't when we get to the next item. But, but yes. So, this, this is encompassing the expansion as well as the existing park itself. And then, we will phase that work because not all of the work on the Utica, the existing Utica Park, requires the contract to be signed from the state because we have per capita money, we have the donation money from the community club. So, we can start working on the.
On the playground.
With that L piece so that we can meet that timely use.
Well, if we remove that play structure, I would like to not have that big empty space there for a long period of time. So, I would hope that it would go, there would be a timeline where it comes down and then, we have a plan that immediately we're working on the play structure.
So, we're going to.
Sneak it in.
We're going to be next day.
Also, I'm a big lover of the stumps in the park. I just want to say that.
It takes, it takes real estate, though.
I know.
And other items.
I understand, but they're lovely play structures for children, organic, natural play structures for children. They're gathering places for adults. Right, right.
Okay. I already went out for public on this, correct?
No, you haven't.
Okay, I am eager to hear from any members of the public on this item.
Well, Caroline, along those lines, I'm going to say, I don't know the physical layout for the new playground. However, what you did point out is an actual fact. Obviously, we have been there many Fridays in a row. And I will say, those stumps, though, yes, they're stumps. They are constantly being played on. And they are a natural playground and it's imagination. And I've heard kids of all ages, the littlest ones scrambling up there that amaze me, the bigger ones, and they're towers, they're jumping off into space, you know, they're rocket ships, they're this, they're that, they're everything. So, whatever the plan is and how it all comes down, if there is a way to save those, I would highly recommend looking at them as a natural playground because we have lots and lots of metal coated with great plastics and. because we have lots and lots of metal coated with great plastics and rubber. But there's something to be said about good old fashioned stumps.
I don't want to be all negative about it. But I've played in that park when I was a kid. I've taken my kids to that park. And now I'm taking my grandkids to that park. And like you mentioned, it is in a real state of disrepair right now. Playing on equipment, missing equipment, like down a one swing. And my question would be that going forward in the future with the new park, is it going to be allowed to fall in the same state of disrepair? And I, of course, I don't really like the stumps because I have a three-year-old granddaughter that jumps off of there and landed on the hard ground with a thump. Concerns me, you know, very much. So if we're going to keep those stumps, then maybe cut some steps into them or put something around the bottom that would cushion kids when they jump from them. But my main concern is how is the new park going to be maintained going forward into the future? Is it going to be allowed to go the way this park has gone?
And real quick, can you state your name for public? We need to make sure we have.
Brian Ties.
Thank you. Okay, any other members of the public here with us tonight that would like to speak on this? Rose, how about anybody online? Okay, we'll bring it back to council. I do have to agree that one of my biggest concerns is that we're going to have this big, beautiful, glorious park that we're spending money on and it's going to turn into a disrepair and a homeless shelter or places for people to camp. And it's not the intent. The intent is to, is to create a park setting for our children and our grandchildren and our future the way we all grew up, so.
Well, making sure that it's budgeted in the future. And also, when you put in a piece of equipment like that, just like with you, when you buy a fire truck, you have to put it in the budget for however long that life span is to maintain. Not just to maintain it, but to replace it.
Yep.
And so as soon as we get that, it really should go into whatever that's called. What is that called Rebecca?
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement and 15 years to reevaluate it and see, and then start planning the budget for that, so. Most likely, we won't be sitting in these seats. So it's our community to make sure that we're, everybody that is sitting in these seats is doing what they're supposed to be doing for that team.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions of council members?
So the other, the other thing is...
I believe so.
Yeah. Didn't we talk about, that's already identified it? It's not like there's going to be a supply chain issue on...
Right, correct.
Unless there's something...
There could be. I have, I don't, I have no idea. Yeah, so we have to work on the timeline for all of that. But the other thing is we need to look at getting, we need to move forward with releasing RFPs for the playground project as part of this as well. So...
As the same resolution, 2306?
It doesn't need a resolution. We just moved...
In the motion?
Motion. So the problem is, you know, we have the conversation about, oh, well, we don't want the stumps there. But the reality is there is an overall funding, you know, plan for that money. And so we've got limited, flat areas for the park. And so those stumps may not play out in the overall design of that entire park. It may not fit with the new playground that's there. It may not, you know, whatever it is. So, you know, we also just need to get approval to issue two RFPs. One for the smaller playground, one for the larger. And it would be design construction. So ideally, we would have the same people do the design and the construction just so it's, if we, if we did, RFPs just for design and then another one for construction, they may not meet in the middle. So if we identify, you know, a respondent that can respond in both ways. But because of the timeline, we want to make sure we're kind of carving out the two. So one that is more fixated on the smaller project for the playground replacement. And then one that's for the larger project that goes along with the entire expansion itself. There will be probably a little bit of overlap because there is some funding in that rural Recreation and Tourism Grant for the playground. But we'll have to shore that up as we get further into the project. And then through that design process, then we can identify if the stumps go or stay, or some of them stay, or they all go. And then that also helps us identify if we're dealing with two different consultants and contractors or one, just depending on what the responses are.
But you want to release two different RFPs, a small one and a big one?
Small one and a big one.
Okay.
And then because this is going to start moving as soon as that contract gets signed by the state and we get it, we want to start having more frequent updates with council as well as outreach with the public, just so they know what's going on. And they can also contribute to some of that conversation in terms of those various elements. Yes, we know playground that's going to be there, but what exactly does the playground look like? Or yes, we know there's going to be this element, but exactly, you know, what all's going to be there? Which we have had some of that. We had talked about the hard court. And then we had some people come in that said, you know, could we do dual purpose, a pickleball slash festival court? Which, yes, you can do that. So it's those kinds of things where it doesn't change the gist of what it is, but the elements within it, yes.
And just back to the stumps. We have 750 people provide input in the community related to the playground design and the design of the park overall. And the stumps did come up. And what we did was we tried to steer towards what about the stumps is important. It was the natural idea and having something that was natural in appearance. And so the description for the playground that we are going to put to be consultant basically says imagination play, natural scape kind of an idea. They may decide to incorporate one or two if they can. Or they may create something similar that you can crawl inside and that type of thing. But, so we basically tried to define what was it about the stumps that was important so that that can get carried on through the design, whether it be the exact stump or perhaps something very similar that gets submitted.
Okay. So having said that, we are looking for a motion to approve Resolution 2306. And in that same motion, we will be releasing two separate RFPs for design and construction.
I will read the motion.
Councilwoman Moncada?
I'll second it.
Councilman? Brolio, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving to item 8E. Discussion and approval of a fee waiver for Grace Hills conditional use permit. Rebecca Kellum.
So our key schedule identifies that this particular request would require a conditional use permit. Our fee structure identifies that it would cost just over $2,100 for that for an off-site sign installation. Grace Hills Covenant Church, they need to install that off-site sign to make it easier for people to find their services. They are housed within Stulte Park right when you turn off of Velocito onto Curt Drive and then make that first left onto Suzanne. They're right there. What they would like to do is put the sign across Velocito Road on the corner of Velocito and Depot, right there. They've gotten approval from the property owner to use, I think there needs to be like a soapstone. They've got approval.
In the barn up there.
Yeah, for that. And they are asking council to waive the $2,100 of the conditional use permit. They are a civic, non-commercial, not-for-profit church organization. They offer a lot of various services. They have community meals, they have veteran support groups, they have a food pantry, and various other community services that they provide at that location. Their biggest issue is that they're having trouble, people finding them because they're on the other side of the creek and there's a lot of vegetation there. So you really can't see them without that sign. But $2,100 was kind of a large chunk for them to absorb. So they have asked council to make that contribution towards community support. And we can utilize a portion of the $55,000 that's in the budget for economic development that we don't have a, an agreement for. A portion of that is an option for you.
Do we know what the hard costs are to the city to get that? I mean, I drove by and looked at it. It looks like it's just missing a sign, maybe replacing the pole. So what exactly are the hard costs that the city is going to actually physically incur?
$2,100. Basically, those fees are to meet the cost of notifying property owners within 300 feet, writing a staff report, having a public hearing at the planning commission because it's an off-site sign. And off-site signs trigger that. It's fairly typical in codes to do that. Otherwise, people could have a business in one town and have their signs all in another. So they tend to regulate fairly closely off-site signs.
So I'm sorry, your answer at first was that the hard costs are $2,100?
Yeah, those fees are...
It's all administrative?
Based upon, it's all staff admin, hard costs, mail out.
Press release.
It has to have a legal notice. So that needs to happen very quickly.
Is any of it, like, going out and inspecting the sign and the posts and the, it's got to go to planning and get approved, the design factor?
And then you get a legal permit to install. Yeah, if necessary.
So I have a question, don't leave just yet. Is there anybody else? So they're talking about a four by eight foot sign. If they went smaller, would it cost any less if you made it a four by four? If it was a vinyl hung sign or instead of a wood, is there any difference? No.
It's an off-site sign. That's what triggers it. And whether or not we'll be able to approve one of that sign size is something we'll have to consider through the review process and our sign code. But basically, this is just to allow them to apply without having to pay the $2,100 to get an off-site sign.
So, okay. So if it was on the side of their building, it wouldn't cost them $2,100?
Oh, no. It'd cost $156.
Right. So it's the off-site that is kicking in?
Free standing off-site sign.
Other questions or comments?
So the lot that's right there on Curt Drive, which is between the parking lot and Curt Drive, that is owned by the church, is that correct? And is there no, is there a reason why the sign's not going there? I know that the other sign is on the street or I guess has a little bit more visibility. But if they were to keep it on their property, then it would be cheaper, correct? It'd be that one hundred.
It wouldn't be off-site.
Right.
Yeah.
So is, I guess my question is just that, is the reason that it's going across the street on that lot just because of visibility?
Yes, that is our understanding.
Yeah. She's talking about over here?
Yeah.
Right on that corner.
Right on the corner.
Because like I know Edward Johnson has a sign right across the street. So I've said this before, obviously, this is a really hard decision. I think far too many times we have given away a lot. And that's part of what has led us to points where we're not making any money, right? With the hanging of the banners, probably waving it for everyone. And we're the ones of the city that are sort of eating the cost on that. Is there any way that the church would be able to pay for a portion of this? $2,000 or $2,100 just to go with their own number?
Right.
And I'm not sure who I'm speaking to with that. But that is a question that I have for Grace Hills.
Okay, so at this point, I think unless anybody else has any questions or comments, I will probably open up to the public. Looks like we have some people here, maybe from Grace Hills even. So at this point, when you do come up to the podium, if you could please introduce yourself. And we look forward to your public comment on this.
I'm David Barbosa. I'm the pastor of Grace Hills. And I'm there, council members. Rebecca, thank you for hearing our request. It really is a visibility problem. It's because the vegetation, it screws, pretty much it screws the entire church. We've scoured, tried to look at the church, worked when we put a sign. Then we put it on poles, then we put it there, and then we get it. But then when we start the pole project, then it triggers a whole new set of fees. So to get it high enough, we're kind of in the same boat there. So what basically we're trying to do is just get some recognition where people are trying to find us for services. The reason we're doing this, we partner with the city. We're trying to support the same people in the city that you're trying to support. We're trying to provide food services, we're trying to provide meals. We're trying to really expand our veteran support group. We're bringing people from outside of the city in because we're kind of a unique one that we're opening a very unique pilot program for veterans in many different ways. And we want to have signage so people can find us. So that's really what we're asking for. It's just not possible for anything that we could, excuse me, that we can see on our side that we get visibility until they make the turn in there. Then they're basically there. If they found that, they found us, so. That's what we're asking for consideration. The $2,100, the reality is, whatever fees it is, it's essentially just going to take away from what we're providing to the city. So if we pay those fees, it's just going to come out of what we would be giving back to the city in terms of food, meals, and services and programs. Thank you for considering.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
So where this proposed sign is, are you paying them any fees? Okay.
No. They've given us permission to use where that existing sign was. And yeah, we'll be probably fixing that up because it's not the best repair. So it'll be done professionally. It'll look nice. It won't be a vinyl banner that hangs there and blows and is torn up in the wind.
Do you have a timeline on, I mean, is, I mean, if you put the sign up and in six months, the property goes up for sale, I mean, how, how do you?
We're aware, and the property owners made us aware that if they do sell the property, then it would be contingent on the next person either allowing us or not allowing us. And if they don't, then with they don't.
I can't say thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Overton. I've been in the city for 29 years. Some of you know me. The area that we're asking for actually allows people that are going up and down the corridor to see where we're at. Now granted, a lot of us can sit there and pull up our iPhones and sit there and say, okay, where do I go to find Grace Hills? If you remember back a few years when they actually started to put in the bypass, people kept pulling up their phones and they got blocked right at that point. So iPhones don't always work. What we would love to do is get a sign up there. We've got approval from the property owner and they can see, like, that sign where we are at. Now granted, as Ms. Moncada indicated, yes, we do have property there right next to the church that belongs to us. And we could, and maybe in time, we will put a sign there. But anybody going up and down that corridor, they just can't see us. So we really would appreciate the council considering, you know, waiving the fees so that we can continue supporting our veterans, which is where I'm really coming from because we get veterans going up and down there. We've got Facebook so they know that we're trying to provide services for them. They don't know where we're at. And if they're going that direction or the other direction, they can find us. So we would appreciate your support here. Thank you. Thank you.
So Rebecca, when you were explaining to council about the sign and the, I'm sorry, my hearing was not good. Hearing needs are on the way up. But you had mentioned something in the budget in regards to?
We have, we have a budgeted amount that is not currently being utilized. That was for a full year, a full fiscal year of contracted services that we're almost halfway through, I guess, our year?
Yeah, we are.
Fiscal year.
Three days in.
Look at that. And so I thought, if the concern is not having some earmark funding, that is a potential pot to pull from.
And what is that total?
That's $55,000.
So $55,000, that's in whatever fund that could be allocated.
Yep.
$2,100 towards this?
Right.
And you're halfway through your fiscal year? So?
That's a lot of signs, is what you're getting ready to say. Don't say that.
Well, I know, I'm just saying that I, like I said, I'm just trying, it's like, I am in favor of this, and I do know that on the first Sunday of every month, that Gray Hills has lunch after service, not just snacks and see you later and hang out, but we provide lunch. And I mean, a lot of food, and it is open to the public. I do know also that on the third Saturday of every month, it's a pantry that's open and it's food provided. Unlike our county, there's no qualifications. You don't have to fill out any paperwork or anything. If you knew a neighbor or a friend or a family member that needed help, you could come in and say, oh, my gosh, you know, I need to help out this family or this person. And as much food as they need is what we will give. We also do have coats to give away, that we have winter coats. If you need them, here they are. The veterans outreach has steadily improved and opened up and had more and more members where they're coming in, they're getting coffee, you know, talking with each other, and food. There's also an outreach over Capello Apartments during the week time, where, again, food is provided. Here you go, maybe you need a little extra. I know how hard it is at the grocery store now. It's insane, and we all know that. So that pantry is being taken out to another area and donated to help people get through the week. So it's, it's something that I'm just trying to stress, that this is outreach. It's not just, hey, come to our church. This is so people can find where to go. And I'm sure you've all driven up and down this road, and if you look, that speed limit doesn't hit 45 until you're down past the entry. So it's 55 up there. So I would, I just hope and pray that you would be able to possibly say okay on this one.
Is lunch available to anyone? Do they have to attend service?
Nope. Come in after service, then whoever you are.
All of their programs are available regardless of what your, um, effort is.
There's literally, the only qualification is, come on over.
Bobby Pyle, also with Gray Hills. Just one more thing I wanted to add is that our food bank just started maybe three or four months ago, and we want to try and get it so it's open more than just once a month so that we can provide for more people. But also at Christmas time, we identified 30 families, well, the school did, Brett Hart for us, and so we took food over to Brett Hart for these 30 families that need it. And again, you know, I realize that maybe for, we're not a big church, but we do want to do more outreach. And so like Pastor David said, any money that we have to spend on a sign is money that gets taken away from what we can do for our community. So that's really our desire. Thanks.
Any other members of the public? Okay, Rose, do we have anybody online that would like to comment?
No.
Having said that, I'll come back here for council. So I do have a question, or more like a statement. Is, in our, in our attachment here, in our example, is this the example of what would be on the sign?
No. Uh, I don't know, but?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
That right there?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
So I guess, I guess I'm a little struggling, a little with, your intent is admirable. Your intent is miraculous, but it's very worthy, but the message on the sign isn't saying, you know, turn left here, or arrow, or something. It's, it's just, it's just a sign for advertisement promoting you guys.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to interject, because we do not yet have an application that has been through the process, we can't actually get into what the design and content, just whether or not.
But I feel like it's important to know if it's going to say veteran services, free meals, food, pantry.
The intent.
And making those recommendations.
Correct, because that is, for me, that makes a difference.
That's my deal breaker, I think, because otherwise it could be on your property.
If it's just promoting your church service, it's hard for me.
Yeah, I mean, we can all say that, but the sign could be on Kirk Drive, and you can have it say whatever you want for little to nothing, but for such an extensive fee waiver that we have hard costs, that we have to come up with another funding source and move money around and things like that, it's, it's not that easy. There's, there's so many hard costs that we have this decision to make. So that is kind of something I wanted to bring up in my conversation. And then my only other, I don't know, do you have other, do you have comments? No, I just have a comment. With the $55,000 that you're talking about, that is set aside, it was set aside for economic development. I don't find this to be an economic development issue. So I am not comfortable taking money from that. I know that we haven't used it, and I know, but that is what it was set aside for. I don't find this to be economic development. So I have a little issue with that. I understand everything else, but I'm looking at where the funding is coming from. If we have a different source, you know, maybe it comes from COVID money, maybe it comes from social services, maybe it comes from something from that. I have a problem with it coming from there.
No matter how you slice it, it's coming from taxpayers.
Well, of course it is. Right. Right. Anybody else? Okay, so I think our decision, do you have something to add?
Well, just to say, I think this is a great thing. I'm all for it. I would love for it to say, you know, veteran services, I would love to say, you know, food bank services available, because you guys are growing, it sounds like. So you guys may offer, you guys are once a month, maybe it'll offer twice a month, and maybe it'll grow into daily, who knows? But if you, if you could put in that type of stuff about what your, what else is going on besides church services?
No.
I think that'd be wonderful, but I'm all for this, so I would, I would make a motion to approve the waiver fee for $2,156.84.
Is there a way that we could table this and come back to this, and maybe have them present us with the sign? But we have, so we now that we have a motion. We do have to address the motion first.
So they have to pay the fee before it gets to the planning commission, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
The only other concern I have is the fact that it's not on the property they own. So, you know, do we approve this, and it goes through, and they put the sign up, and six months down the road, the property owners come into, who knows, life-changing situation, and now the property's for sale, and the new owners come down and say, get rid of the sign. So, they don't feel that, yeah? Right, but we're out $2,100. We are still at the $2,100. So I don't like building a house on someone else's property. You never build your house on your in-law's property. It's a really bad idea. So I, I'm going to give it just a second, see if we have a second on this, but I do, I do have another idea, is I'm wondering if there's a way we can bring this back for some sort of discounted solution for?
Well, you don't have to bring it back. If, if, that's a discussion. You tell, you, you.
So what I would like to see is at least a portion of this, hopefully, to be paid so that we aren't out the whole $2,100. And I would also like to see if we could explore some sort of an agreement, a written agreement with your property owner so that there's some, some longevity to this sign, being able to be a part of our community, to serve its purpose. So some sort of a, and it could then have a longer effect. The sign could be there longer if there was a signed agreement between the property owner and Gray Hills. But those are the things I was looking for, but we have a motion.
So you're going to see the motion dies or?
So, but first, real quick, we do have to see if the motion, is anybody seconding the motion, or?
You put a motion, sorry.
Yes.
A motion before we're on.
It's fine, I put a motion to fund.
Yes.
The 21, whatever the heck it was, the 21.
5684.
21, 5684, to fund it.
So we're looking for a second?
If there's no second, then it'll die.
Right, but, and you had no other additions to that?
I have no additions. I think they're, they're doing a great thing. We donate to a lot of things, and we, and they're providing some services and hopefully growing. So I think they are in economic development, and I think they are something that is good in this community. So I'm willing to fork out and roll the dice on the $2,156.84.
And so I also remind you, over 6% of our population is below the poverty level.
Well, nobody's, no one is discounting what is being done. We just have to look at it, we have to look at it from all angles. Nobody is saying what they're doing is not important. It's absolutely important, and I absolutely commend every one of you for what you've done. We just have to look at it in all aspects, because if we, if we do this, how many other, maybe not churches or, or something are going to come and say, oh, well, they got a sign, so we want to put up a sign, or we have a food bank, or, you know, what about helping hands across the street from the St. Patrick's Catholic Church? Now, are they going to come and approach us?
And Sierra Hope.
And Sierra Hope, and the Pregnancy Center. I mean, are they all going to approach us for signs, and now our entire?
It definitely sets a precedent.
Yes, so we just have to look at it.
It sets a precedent.
And yes, we have.
We have the cash. We may not have the cash.
We do have the cash, but even our own, like, ACBA, we, I don't think we've even, you know, like, I just want to do this in fairness, so if we haven't done this much money to one of our, you know, economic development partners, I just want to be cognitive of that and how we spend our money.
We've done over $6,500 that.
Right, and we, and they're there for economic development purely, and outreach and things like that for businesses. So I just, I want to weigh this all in fairness. And as a veteran, and I'm on the Veterans Board for Angels Camp, I definitely commend what you're doing. I think it's really important, and a lot of veterans out there in Angels Camp are needing help. I know that firsthand. And so I love what you're doing here, but I, I mean, you know, we sit in this weird space of having to be careful of how we spend taxpayers' money, how it's supposed to be allocated, and who we've, who we're doing this for, and how we set precedents. And so it's just a lot to weigh. It doesn't seem like it's that much money, but it is. And so I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to come to a good decision. I'm, I'm good with, like, partial, somehow they have to need us a little bit on this. I'd be okay with that because there's, there's ownership with that, and so that's kind of where I'm sitting, if anything, just wondering.
So I believe the motion's failed, for lack of a second. And I think now, I've mentioned a discounted fee, and Caroline's mentioned it, Isabel's exploring something like that. So I don't know if we do need to have something like that discussed or brought back at a different, at a later time. It wasn't one of our options, right, Rebecca? So?
You can make up your own. I'll make a motion right now to fund half of the $2,156.84.
Let's see that match real quick.
$1,070.
Look at you go.
Can, can you throw anything else in there? Well, I.
Well, they would need us halfway.
Right, right, no, but I'm talking about like a signed agreement with the property owner or something about the language.
Wow, you do that though, if the guy wants to sell it. I mean, that, that's a roll of the dice on the property.
The only thing I would say is that there would be some sort of contingency, that if the property were sold within a certain amount of time, that the church would need to pay the, that remaining fee.
Something like that.
Or something like that, but I mean, I don't know.
I don't, for me, that starts to get messy.
That's what I'm saying.
It starts to get messy and.
Then you're tripping over, what's that, tripping over orders?
Yeah, I just, I feel like that's getting in the weeds and muffins.
And I, and I hope that they would put in there that the recommendations we wanted about the veteran services and the food bank. And then the planning commission will be the last vote on it, and they will decide on what that, what that sign looks like, turn left here, you know, 100 feet ahead, wherever they're kind of placing it, that would be that up to the planning commission and so.
I will second that 50%.
Okay, so we have a motion. Rebecca has the second for 50%. And we now have a motion and a second, so we can poll, or we can go for all in favor?
Because we have a different motion we'd like to make.
Okay, so then what we need to do is?
Roll call vote.
We need to go roll call vote on this motion that was, has, is on the table, so.
Vice Mayor Moncada?
Nay.
Councilmember Sharata?
Nay.
Yes.
Councilmember Brolio?
Yes.
Councilmember Tisquarnia?
Yes.
Mayor Hurnus?
Nay.
So it dies.
So the motion that we would like to make is that they are paying one-third.
Yeah, and we would pay two-thirds.
And I think that comes out to him just doing this, it's like around $700.
Okay.
Because I do think that what they're doing is great, I do want to go on there and advocate that, I do support that, and I think based off of fee waivers that we have done for the high school or for ACBA, it's in that $500 range. So for us to be asking them to cover something similar, that us covering two-thirds and them covering one-third is something that?
It feels better, it feels more in line with what we've been doing.
So we're going to cover two-thirds, they're covering a third.
Correct.
Okay.
Which, like I said, it's like 700 and something.
They would have to come up with it.
We would pay $1,422, or $23, 1423.
Okay, we have a motion.
So vice mayor.
So vice mayor, say what their portion is, just so we're all clear.
Their portion is, okay.
And then their portion.
And ours is 1423, and we'll kick in 84 cents.
Okay. Motion from Vice Mayor Moncada. Looking for a second from Commissioner. Councilmember. Councilmember, what are we talking about? Councilmember Sharata, now looking for all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Bye over.
Yeah.
We can make, just a quick minute, maybe a five-minute break, we need to just have a bye over. We will repeat. Thank you, and I would like to open back up with item 8F, which is discussion and approval of the Police Officers Association memorandum of understanding and approved resolution 2305.
Okay, so since I've been here, we've talked about a lot of issues in terms of being able to recruit and retain staff within the police department. And, you know, if you just turn on the TV, you know it's, there's an issue in that nationwide. But even with us offering retention and recruitment incentives, and the police officer and training program, it just wasn't doing anything. And then in addition to that, there were other issues that it just was more than what that would be helping. So kind of went back to the drawing board and looked at the class and comp that was done in April of 2021. What I saw is that it didn't consider the comparator agencies, so comparator agencies are all the other agencies that the city would have been compared against, right? So a class and comp study will look at similar agencies within our area that, and look at their base pay, their benefit makeup, kind of all of these various components of. that, and look at their base pay, their benefit makeup, kind of all of these various components of compensation, and then look at where, where we fall by a position. And so what I had identified is in the class and comp that was done, it didn't consider that almost all of the comparative agencies had either adopted a cost of living increase or were in the process of adopting.
That was missing.
That was missing. So when that, when that market data, where these positions fit in their comparators, we were under between 3.5 and 4% in average or median against our comparators. When you factor in the fact that all those comparators were also going to be doing cost of living increases, that number just.
Grew.
Capted that, yeah.
And it didn't just grow on year one, it grew because those contracts were then going through 2024, 2025, 2026. So when you go fast forward, what it's going to be, what that gap is going to be by the end of those particular contracts, we were going to be way out, way out of the water. So not only were we way under on year one, we were going to just keep digging a hole because each year they were going up and each year we were staying flat. And then the city of Sonora came along. So that was all happening regardless of what Sonora did. But then Sonora used Stockton Modesto base salaries as comparator agencies. I've never, I've been involved in various class and comps and we've never used Stockton or Modesto in our comparator agencies because they're, they're like carrying an apple, comparing an apple to a, like a Volvo. It's not even in the, it's, it's not even, yeah, anyway, but that's what happened. And so that then made the city of Sonora to be the highest paid law enforcement agency in the tri-county area and beyond. So then that just kind of put salt in the wound because not only were we undermarket because of all the comparators, then Sonora just kind of threw everyone out. So at that point, the Twalomee County was having to now kind of go back to the drawing board. In fact, they were talking about changing, actually reducing their contribution to their visitors bureau quite significantly in order to shift that money to public, public safety. Calaveras County is okay at this point just because they had already contemplated cost of living adjustments, multi-year cost of living adjustments within theirs, but a lot of the other agencies had as well. So Sonora will still be higher than everybody, but, and we're not, no one's trying to get up to that, that level, but we just want to kind of be comparative. So all of this was evaluated, discussed it with all of you and direction was given to me to begin negotiations with the union. I have to say it was one of the like easiest negotiations because I think they were shocked that I came knocking on their door.
They want to give you more.
Yes, we would like to give you something. Is that true? Jake?
He's just smiling.
He was already here.
But it was, they, they were really great and, and we, you know, kind of worked through various things. I also looked at it as an opportunity to go not just adding those additional components that we talked about, but also to clean up some additional language that was in it that was causing ambiguity issues. You know, like I would ask Rose, well, how are we supposed to interpret that or what does this mean? And we, no one could really, that's not the point of an MOU. An MOU is supposed to really define everything. So it's very clear. And there was some ambiguity and some conflicts, conflicting issues in there. So it was a perfect time. We're opening it up anyway. May as well clean it up. So they were all really good with all of it. So just to kind of give you a recap, the following changes were offered and accepted by the membership. Cost of living adjustments for each fiscal year covering the agreement. The reality is if we kept that first year COLA, the same for the officer, corporal and sergeant, the sergeant would be under, under comp, they would be under, they would still be undermarket. So the decision was made to go ahead and do the 7% year one for officer, 9% for sergeant. So we had talked about overall about a 16, 16 and a half percent increase, but we just shifted the percent difference between officer and corporal and sergeant. We don't currently have corporal. We have sergeants and we have officers. But we do have a classification for corporal. So if we ever expanded, the department got bigger, the corporal is in line where it needs to be and we wouldn't have to come back to council and say, oh, now we have to do a salary adjustment for the corporal. So it's, it's all kind of baked in there. So year one for officer, seven, year two would be two and a half, two and a half, and then 2% would be final year. Corporal and sergeant, 9% year one, then three and a half, three and a half and three. So the incorporation of all the side letters, so we've had a few side letters. One for the retention and recruitment incentives. We corrected the language on the K9 pay. We corrected the language on the holiday for pension reporting purposes. All those side letters that have been approved since the approval of the first draft of the MOU, those were all combined into the MOU. So we don't have a bunch of side letters off to the side. We also added language for traditional scheduled employees. We have one traditional scheduled employee, that's the SRO. That wasn't ever really contemplated in the MOU. The whole MOU really wrapped itself around 12-hour shift employees, not traditional scheduled employees. So just to make sure that that was contemplated in there, we put that in there. There was a typo. It said that the vacation accrual max would be 1.5% of the annual.
Oh.
We knew what it meant, but that was not correct. So it's 150%, not 1.5%. The state has approved a change and we will have to bring this forward to, as side letters for the other MOUs. But the state changed their state bereavement leave requirements. So it was three days, now it's five. We only, we can keep the three days paid that we're paying, but we have to provide for the additional two. But we don't, the employee can take it, but they would have to use standard vacation or unpaid, whatever they wanted to do. But they would, they would be allowed to have the full five. And then there's additional requirements with regards to that bereavement leave.
Did they add language? You can spell out who your significant other or your chosen person is?
So it's all just state, state lingo. We removed the special assignment pay cap. It should say cap in there, but it, that just mirrors other agencies. We only have two special assignment pays. So it said you could get two and a half for this one and two and a half for this one, but you can't have special assignment pay greater than 5%. We just removed that section. It still works out the same because we only have two, but if we ever negotiated in the future additional special assignments, there wouldn't be a cap on that. And that is the same as what it is other agencies. We changed the bilingual pay from $50 a month to 2.5%. That mirrors other agencies. We clarified staffing levels. There was a, a minimum staffing level requirement in the original MOU that we weren't following. And ultimately, staffing levels are dependent on financial resources and, and discussions between the police chief and myself and city council. So that's what we did. It's just clarified that. So it's not X type of position or X number of position. We removed section 8.03 because that was conflicting with section 10.08 and that had to do with post immediate certification pay for corporal. We increased uniform allowance from 1,000 to 1,500. And also we clarified that those would be paid along with a pay period, not with a separate check. In practice, it's been a separate check, which then creates more work for payroll. So it will just not part of payroll. We clarified what safety equipment means. It was this long section that detailed every single piece of safety equipment. And really, it's just that safety equipment is defined in law. And then the police chief can define any other safety equipment that he deems fit. So we just clarified that. We added the step F back into the salary grade. If you recall in the last negotiations, it dropped off F and just stopped at E. And then we added language to address employees who are currently and have been at step E and the process to move step F. That way there's no question or ambiguity in terms of, well, I'm at E right now, so how do I get to F? We spelled that out. We removed the essential, essential pay language regarding COVID vaccination incentive pay as well as, oh, COVID language and the, the essential pay and the COVID vaccination incentive pay. It shouldn't have ever been in the MOU, so we removed it out of the MOU. We did increases, reductions and clarification language in education and certification pay. In talking to the membership, some of them went away completely. Some of them increased by like a half percent. A lot of them went down. So it was kind of a what makes sense instead of keeping, it was very, there was a lot of ambiguity on the education incentive. It was kind of whatever someone thought and then a range between this number and that number, which then who makes that decision? So we just clarified all of that. So it's very, very clear. We changed the cap from 10% to all, for all, to 10% for the officer and increased it to 12 and a half percent for corporal and sergeants. We removed post-management because it doesn't apply to this MOU. And we added state disability insurance. This is an employee cost. We do, we will have to bring back to city council to approve a resolution, but there's no cost to the city. And then OE3 is having discussions with other memberships to determine if they also want to participate in state disability.
They have the option to or?
We have the option to participate, to voluntarily elect. And if the membership, the majority of the membership of each bargaining unit or group of unrepresented, can't be elected, sorry, but unrepresented want to participate, then that entire group will participate. So right now we have no SDI. So if you had an FMLA leave, so you've got 12 weeks medical leave, have a baby, whatever, you are to take your own time the full 12 weeks or are you getting paid?
And there's clear, no clear definition on.
And there's no.
Correct.
Yeah. But we're going to offer this for all.
We will offer that for all. So POA has voted to do it.
They have to vote on it if they want to as a group, if they don't, but we will offer it to them.
Has not yet gotten back to me. FIRE did, so FIRE is good. All have the discussion with the unrepresented to determine if they want to. And I think it's an excellent benefit. I'm used to seeing that if you don't have SDI, then you have very, very high accrual balances. What we did is we capped all the accrual balances and you don't have SDI. So if you were to go on an FMLA leave, you're not getting paid. You, there's, you're, you don't have sufficient leave, sick vacation or otherwise in order to actually do it. So it's just not, I, I don't like it. It is available through a different program though. So it costs the employee a lot more.
Okay.
So this way, we administer it.
It's nothing. Like 0.9, I think you said.
It's 0.9%. It's very minimal. So I mean, it's, I think it's a great insurance, you know, break the leg, need to go out on a, like whatever the issue is, I think it's a great benefit. So I'm working on that. They went ahead and did that. So I'm going to just follow back up on miscellaneous and the unrep's. And then depending on what those are, I'll bring probably at the next meeting a resolution to go ahead and submit that application through participating in SDI and then we'll move forward in that vein.
And this comes out of the general?
Yeah. So estimated cost across all fiscal years, day one all the way through is $168,000. That does not include merit increases because those already were going to happen or changes of benefits or longevity because those were already going to happen. And then we will still be under where Calaveras County is and will still be under where the city of Sonora is. But when you look at all the comparators, we'll be at market by the last year of the contract. And that is, I think, the light at the end of the tunnel for staff that are here that, that were making strides to get there. Not getting there all at one time, but we will get there.
And this contract is, the end of the contract is three years?
2026.
2026. June, yeah. So what I included in here was the Redline MOU, which I, I put a more professional, clear-looking table of contents in here. Cleaned up a lot of the language and headers and formatting. Got rid of some ambiguous language, everything kind of that I bullet pointed. So it seems like there was a lot of changes and to some degree there were, but a lot of them were already either contained in those side letters that we had brought forward, that have already been voted on. The biggest changes really have to do with the pay. This is that bereavement leave section, section 6.04. And that just comes straight out of what the state's requirement is. And again, we'll be bringing that forward for the other MOUs. We have to, we have to have that included anyway. And.
Sign one.
But we talked about doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was a good idea.
Yeah.
It was a very good idea.
Gretel?
No, I don't know that it was mine, but.
It was your job.
I said, and the puppy take it.
Right. Oh, that's right.
They didn't want the puppy. Nobody wanted to do it.
Did she even try the puppy?
Nobody wanted the puppy.
So that's really it. It was a very, it was the most painless negotiation I have ever been in and the fastest one. It was fantastic.
So if we do this, we don't have to talk about it for three more years. That is.
Just this one.
Just this one. That's good.
But if we do this, who else is going to come knocking on our door?
There's not any other ones where the class and comp was this far on the line. Okay. Good job.
So I have, I have questions on $168,000 a year.
No, no, the whole.
Well, the whole, right. Sorry, it shouldn't have, exactly, it should not have, yes. Estimated cost across all fiscal years, $168,000. Is that what the current staffing level we're at now? Or fully staffed because we're missing?
That's fully staffed. That includes vacant positions.
That includes the vacant positions.
Good.
Okay.
Thanks.
You wouldn't remember.
No. So I, I just, so basically what I did is I said, okay, here's all of the, the officers and sergeant positions. Here's where they all are right now. If we increase them by this percent, it's going to increase the taxes, the purse, the everything, right? And then what's, what's that difference across all of them? And I don't care if they're filled or unfilled. So we included vacancies in there as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent. It's a lot.
Your magic purse strings, okay? I know, yeah.
It'll be more expensive to try to contract out.
I know and I know we need to get, I mean, Ellis is still sleeping in his trailer out back. I know we need some help and we need different things. It's just what comes down the road scares me.
Wait, you're talking about her like, like down the road or even like five years down the road?
I mean, like three to five when we have to redo all these, when we do FIRE and everybody again. I mean, like three to five when we have to redo all these, when we do FIRE and everybody again. Now, we'll be here to do this one again. These two, these three maybe not, you will be. Good times, lady. Hold on tight.
Yeah, déjà vu. Okay, comments? Anybody else have anything, please?
Right, this is important, too. It was one of the top things they said in the survey.
So I'll make the motion.
Wait, wait, we got to get the call. Any comment online? There's nobody here with us tonight.
Anyone wearing a blue uniform?
Thank you for making a comment.
Does anybody want to say anything? Billy, are you afraid to say anything?
I will wait.
I can only imagine. Five years.
It's two now.
Okay, so bringing it back, looking for the motion.
All right, I will make a motion to approve resolution 2305.
Okay.
As it is written.
Second?
A little second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes on 5-0. Takes us to item number nine now, and item nine is administration report. Rebecca?
Okay. So I basically have just been working on the storm since.
The 29th.
The 29th. And yeah, so we have briefing meetings every morning. We'll have those through Friday. They'll be extended through if we need to.
Are we going to get a damage report?
We're working on a damage report right now. So we're compiling damage estimates across all of our facilities, roads, infrastructure, equipment that was used, materials that we had to purchase. We, I've been doing a lot of task mission requests to Cal-oes, County Cal-oes, to consolidate because Public Works County and our Public Works Department needs a lot of sand, a lot of sandbags, a lot of waddles, a lot of, you know, everything in terms of erosion control. So we have gotten a ton of support with that. So we're not having to run around trying to go find sand that's coming to us and it's very convenient having Caltrans right next door. So that's great. We do have some fallen trees that we are working with a contractor to come in and get those trees down. There may be a claim for that one, one of them. Anyhow, the, and we're just preparing at this point for the next round. Mostly concerned with potentially falling trees.
How are our buildings doing?
The city hall completely leaked.
It's affordable.
Yeah. And then the museum had a lot of leaks. I got a report from Martin Hubbardey on that, so.
How about old city hall? Has anyone been in there?
Haven't been in there.
About the post office?
I haven't heard anything from the post office.
They had a roof issue.
Yeah, but we did fix it.
So our fix held up?
Possibly. I haven't heard anyone screaming.
Sometimes the walls just leak water.
They just, they like, yeah. They condensate and weird stuff, yeah.
So yeah, so there's that.
What happened?
That's weird.
Well, there's just so much water, it's rock.
I've been in very close contact with Joel and Utica, just making sure we're relaying information back and forth in terms of water coming down. And then I usually send out a notification to staff just to make sure that they're aware. I did set up an emergency operations SharePoint that we're going to make available to everybody. Just it'll have all of our emergency operations plans, all of our incident forms should we need them, contact information, emergency resource information, everything that we would need in order to respond to an emergency. So if I get hit by a bus tomorrow, someone can still find everything where it needs to go. Michelle is working on the finance pieces of it. So we have project coding set up. We have payroll ready to run for that and we'll be identifying all of those costs. Yeah, so that's that. So that's what I've been working on for that whole time. And outside of that, just work, just trying to get caught up on everything else that I'm doing. Needing to get information back to Department of Water Resources, just following up some additional information for the grant for the water treatment plant. Any update on front best or anything? It's still going and yeah, we still have a little bit of money left. Not a ton, but a little bit. Yeah, it's a lot of, we're still selling carts and there's still a lot of spending happening. I think for right now, there's still, people are still holding on to some of them, but I think we've almost hit $50,000 in redemptions.
And so.
I spent all my, like, two days after.
I'm gonna do it.
So it's, they're still out there, so if anyone's interested. I am working on some projects that I'm going to be bringing forward to council, speaking of kind of economic development and trying to kind of help with some of the downtown aesthetic issues and doing some outreach with some of the building owners that are down there.
We could use some of that $50,000 for that, right?
Yeah, we can also use some of that COVID relief money.
Let's use that first.
So, nice. Yeah. So.
Because the lights and the plaques.
The plaques, I think we're getting some movement on. So I've been talking to Robert Gossi. He has a new machine that he's been trying to figure out how to use. We think he might be able to do the engraving. So we're coordinating with him on that. And Martin has said that he and his staff are more than happy to do any outreach for the building owners on that as well. So we're just trying to coordinate that. Haven't heard anything about lights, so I don't know about that.
Like the twinkle lights?
The ones that lie on the top of the building?
Yeah.
We're just lighting in downtown in general.
Just lighting downtown.
Oh, and Jeff was at the movie theater, like that's back. Of what?
He's back.
He's back. It says on the thing, Jeff is back.
Oh, wow. I thought it was a movie.
I don't like that back parking lot on the side of East Coast. That thing is dark as heck.
I mean, just to get people to walk around. Yeah, aesthetic-wise, it'd be great to just even do the trunks of the trees and lights. You know, just it's so beautiful and you can leave it year-round.
So that is another report that we need to give you.
Hanging baskets, I don't know.
Those trees are probably going to have to go. So we have probably a pretty significant plane that might be coming in.
I remember when they got planted and my husband being like, hey, I said they were the wrong type of trees.
They are the wrong type of tree. So what is happening is it's causing the sidewalks to go like this and people are tripping on them. And so we are actually getting people injuring themselves on them. So we've gone through, we have marked all of the uneven spaces. We do have a contractor. Yes. We did, we did issue the type of materials request. We did get a response. We did identify lowest bidder for that. They can't start until this month sometime or early next month. But it's really just repairs. Ultimately, that sidewalk's going to have to get pulled up and then re-poured.
Can we get county numbers to do that?
No, because there are sidewalks. But it doesn't fix itself if those trees stay there. So the trees are going to have to come out. So they're so tall, they don't even provide shade anymore.
They don't, they're just like long sticks who do huge roots.
We did trim them, so it's not dropping as much. But yeah, those trees are going to have to come out. So that's a bummer.
When we talked about the plan downtown and there was that like little bump out tiny part kind of thing in front of the movie theater, like how far off is that?
We need to get funding for it.
So long.
So kind of we, not necessarily, but we've moved, we've continued to move. Yeah, like so we've got the Caltrans shop project takes it down to. Then we did purchase the property on the other side of Napa, so that is available there. Then it's just a matter of work currently down. So we were not able to get the funding for that rest or scrabble.
The little bump outs? The bump out there?
We didn't get that one. We did get the funding for the Eagle Creek, additional funding for there. However, I have talked to council of governments that there are some other funding that's coming down and we want to align that with that downtown plan. So we're still pushing the downtown plan. And so continuing to push downtown direction.
Maybe we can replace the trees with streetlights or something, you know, in their streets.
You do need greenery downtown. I don't think it'll look terrible without any greenery down there. The barrels are gone, but that's okay.
Caltrans has trees that are specifically approved along.
Highways.
Yeah, so that, yeah. Also, we are, Caltrans is slating for their next project in order to do the landscaping for the sidewalk project that they did. And hopefully, we'll be able to start sharing some of that information because that looks really amazing. But I'm hoping what's going to be coming here in the next month or so that I can start sharing what that looks like because it's really exciting.
Is it off the first couple of designs that we have?
It's a whole thing. It just looks amazing.
How's our signage project doing?
The wayfinding signs are.
I always want to call them Wayfair signs, but I know that's not right.
Wayfinding signs are still going. We were ahead of the curve, so it's really the county.
And the county's way behind the curve.
So we're just kind of waiting for them to get to their point.
What about the discussion for short-term parking downtown?
That, we're going to start working on hopefully this month or next month. So it's on my list of things to address. But we would need to bring that back to council as well to get that approved. But we do have some parking issues downtown.
The whole main quarter. People park in front of their shops for eight hours.
The little markers downtown to park in are getting really worn. So they need to be re-marked. And that's part of the issue is that people don't even know where to park because you can't see the markers are, yeah.
Well, well, we're kind of talking about 24/7 parking.
Oh, yeah, shopkeepers are always downtown. It's like Men and Murphy's, too.
So we're working on it. We're going to plan to, we'll address that with engineering and land in mind. In terms of damage assessment, I will be reaching out to businesses just to see if any of them had any extensive damages or issues from this storm, just so they're on our list so we can give that to Cal-oes as well. And that opens up funding through SBA. Should it become a declaration, and I'm still waiting to jump in on what that goes through.
The porch fared very well, but the others weren't, so.
Right, it's helpful. Proactive.
Yeah. And then outside of that, might have been combined, but we're still clean. And I think that's.
That it?
It is.
Okay, thank you for that.
Oh, one more thing.
Go ahead.
News and notes. So I'm going to switch news and notes over to a monthly because we are about to start working through our strategic management, our strategic planning documents. So we're going to work on getting those brought back here. And then part of the implementation and. I can't drive it like. Oh, accountability is coordinating with staff and then we'll compile that information, yeah, for those. So we'll kind of do a similar format, but it'll just be not coming on a weekly basis. I think weekly was important because you guys were not getting, you were deficit information and now you're getting a lot of information. So we're going to move it to a monthly and then we'll start incorporating objectives that also align with the strategic land as well. And that should, I don't know if it'll be on the next meeting, but it might be on the first meeting of February, the draft.
Thank you. Okay, council report. I'll start with you, Ms. Ms. Friday, the holidays are over.
That's like a month long, Christmas holidays. But the Christmas parade was fantastic. I did not hear any complaints. Downtown was busy all day. The shops were busy. Students' parade was over, though pretty much it emptied out. But the bars were packed and so that was good. I think it was an overall super good event. Weather was fantastic, so really good move to.
I loved having the mercantile dressed up.
Oh, beautiful.
It really made it downtown.
Yeah, 100%. Other than that.
Okay, what do I have? So a couple of things. I, Christmas Day every year, I deliver food for the native sons in Murphy's. And so I did that, which is always really an amazing event. I think there was over 700 and so much meals served on that day. So they did a great job and hopefully, hopefully, Utica, UWPA, we had that on the 13th. Of course, this was before any storms, but we did go over operations and conveyance reports, monitoring the water supplies, which are going to be much, much better. We went through the Part 12D of our FERC inspections, which is like dam safety stuff of Hunter's, Murphy's Forbay and Murphy's Afterbay. It was all dam safety driven. We were compliant and everything is suitable for, to be continued for use is the FERC licensing verbiage. We updated some legislature for the Brown Act, which I think is something we've done here, too. And then went over the November annual maintenance outage, which is all of the repairing and replacing and everything of 350 feet of the flume, the cleanouts and the vegetated control. So we kind of went through all that. Moving forward, January 9th, Monday of next week, is the, at the Bret Hart Theater, is the video for the Utica video for the UWPA system, the whole entire conveyance system. So if you guys are available on the 9th, it premieres at the Bret Hart Theater at 6:00 PM. There's going to be another date and I don't know, the second one's going to be in Murphy's, I think at Black Bar, but I think that was still pending. So that one we know about is January 9th, if you can attend. Something else, we have an upcoming free dump day, January 14th, out at the fairgrounds. The county is doing that. So I don't know if that's something we can get on our website. But basically, it's Cal Waste is the sponsor. It's out at Frog Town. You can, for free, you can dump everything but household trash, appliances, mattresses, tires, things like that. I think the only thing is no electronics, no electronics, no household items. You can do tires, no green waste and no.
No hazardous, right?
No hazardous, of course.
So we have it on our.
There's a flyer on that.
Website. I've seen it go out on something of ours, but.
We need to get that message out. That might help for cleaning.
So it's on our website.
There's been multiples like West Point, they've been all over.
Yeah, and I just.
They did have all the hazardous waste, too, like in September, October.
Yeah, they do it like twice a year.
Yeah.
No, there, no household trash, no hazardous waste, no e-waste, no green waste, no concrete or demolition materials and no bulky items such as old furniture, chairs, tables, et cetera. But you can do appliances, mattresses, tires, car pickups and trucks, no rims.
Let's just make sure that our code compliance has that armed, you know, if they're out doing code compliance and this could be a strategy or having to give people as an option to come in.
Not the whole car.
Not the whole car.
Actually, they had somebody try and bring a whole car, I think, last night. If I remember, yeah, I remember. One meeting where they tried to bring a whole car.
Okay.
Jen covered everything for me too. I have UWPA budget on the 12th. On the 9th, I said I'd be at the UWPA City of Angels. What else tomorrow night, we have COG.
I thought it was... Is it January and...
I don't think you have one that just...
No, we don't, that's right, we don't have one this week.
Oh, yeah, a lot, January.
February, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, because you guys worked it out over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I worked it out of there.
Yeah. Holidays are over, and we're in the new year.
On December 10th and 11th, the Angels Camp Veterans Memorial District handed out gift certificates for $100 to local veterans. We had a lower-than-normal turnout because of the storm. That was that weekend. We gave out about 215, 220, and we normally do about 250, but that was great. And then, I attended the Central Sierra Economic Development Meeting on December 8th. And we talked about a lot of stuff. A lot of, there's just a lot of grants coming down the Turnpike and the county. Our county is pretty involved. We did talk about the new Brown Act rules, which I'm, we haven't had that here, so I'm assuming it's coming. We did talk about an update on the California Advanced Services Fund, Rural and Urban Regional Broadband Consortium Grant Application that Kathy Galino is working on. And, and then there's the update on the Eastern Sierra, which is what they call us, the Eastern Sierra K-16 Planning Grant. So, there's a lot going on there. There's also with, from Chico State Enterprises, the update on the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. So, that says, that's kind of what, who did that?
Other presentation.
Presentation. Okay, so there was that, and I have the upcoming schedule if you want it. Okay, great. And then COG on the 7th. Let's see, so Caltrans is doing their move over safety campaign, drive, like driving and work zones. Apparently, they've had a lot of accidents, which is terrible, but... And then, funding opportunities, reconnecting communities, highways to boulevards. So they're going to be, call for projects in 2023 in January. And then, Clean California, call for applications in January, also on the Caltrans website. And then, we talked about dump days. And then, the best piece of news from there is that we got approved for the Angels Creek Bike and Pedestrian Ride of $863,000. So that was really big. I think only two projects got moved forward. The other one was the Valley Springs Elementary School Safety Phase 1, 1.8 million. So I think that was it for COG. And then there was CTA. There's two buses ordered for like two years ago, and they still...
I was going to say...
I think we, I think we have VIN numbers, they've given us like...
We didn't know what it would like, and we did it too.
So, that's all I have for that. Missed the parade, sorry about that. Heard it was great.
Yeah, it was good.
Yeah. I have nothing to report.
Well, I do have to say that I missed the parade, and the reason I missed the parade is because I became a grandma.
That's right.
So I was with my daughter at the hospital that night, and it was amazing, so.
I feel like that's an okay excuse.
I, that's my excuse. Okay, we're, we've already talked about the correspondence with news and notes, correct? Rebecca, do you have anything? Anybody want to make comments or questions on news and notes? Item number 12, calendar, Rose.
So I will update the calendar with all the changes we made tonight. We will be bringing forward the AB 2449, which is the Brown Act changes. And then, we also got to discuss the July meeting and potentially the November meeting, second meeting, so.
Oh, because it falls on the holidays?
July, definitely, on 4th of July, and then November is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So, super close. Whereas, we've always canceled the second one in December. December, we will have the two, so it's...
I'm still not getting the calendar, so I need to figure that out.
I'm going to see if we can maybe come up with something, use Teams, maybe? And that it will maybe alert you, something. We'll, we'll come up with something a little better.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
I don't get them either.
I don't get them, but I can access them.
I just know, I just kind of know.
I just know, I know, well, I get an email, hey, you've got a meeting, Thursday. Great, I'll be there.
I do the, oh, shoot, I had a meeting an hour ago.
Okay, looking for adjournments.
I'll make a motion.
Motion from, it just popped on, and then it went to...
Out.
Second minute. All approved.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.